Good afternoon, good after early evening, actually. I call to order the April 22nd, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Let's all say the pledge together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, March 2nd, 2020, Business Meeting, March 2nd, 2020, Business Meeting, March 11th, 2020, Special Meeting, March 11th, 2020, Business Meeting, April 1, 2020, and Special Meeting, April 1, 2020.
The move.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. I got Ryan, the second. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? Motion carries, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, do I have any kudos for today? Been a long time. Any kudos? Mr. Morosky?
I would like to give a kudos to all the staff members that have been pivoting in their roles so they can continue helping kids. I was talking with cafeteria manager from Withrow who has elected to set up shop at Hayes Porter to help hand out food, and everyone's being so agile, everyone from central office, teachers, paras, custodian, everybody. That's my son James saying hello to everybody, the way he knows how. Some kudos really to everybody who's pivoting roles and doing what they can to take care of our kids, and I will go on mute.
Okay, thank you. Any other kudos? I do have one. Okay, so I'll go ahead, as I don't know if you all are aware, but April 22nd is Administration, Administrative Professionals Day. So I want to give kudos to all of the district administrative assistants and administrative professionals who have been our rock and our foundation through these times. We could not do it without you. But I want to give a special thanks to the two ladies who work with the board, and I've already thanked them because they've had to put up with me trying to sort through all this, this blue jean stuff. So on behalf of the board, through our staff, I want to say happy Administration, Administrative Professionals Day. Thanks, thanks for what you do, folks. Okay, any other kudos? Okay, Ms. Bates, please present the retirement.
Yeah, we have a long list of retirements today, beginning with the certificated personnel. Sally H. Behringer, Nancy J. Bergerlock, Dustin A. Brantley, James R. Compton, Julia A. Conero, Mary Teresa Cruz, Yvonne Cummings, Sandra L. Gord, Manu Gupta, Barbara A. Hall, Julie A. Hallebrin, Roger L. Lewis, Dorothy C. Licard, Giselle L. Mack, Phyllis E. Parish, Ellen T. Pollock, Patricia C. Roseau, Jeffrey P. Savion, June C. Smith, Karen Veith-Sweets, Deborah A. Ulrich, Catherine Brevard-Vessi, Ronald M. Went. And from our civil service personnel, we have one, we have Sue M. Hampel. So we wish all of our staff who are retiring well, thank them for their service to our children, and congratulate them on this next step in their life.
Thank you, Ms. Bates, and congratulations to all of our retirees. That is record numbers, the longest list at least since I've been in this seat. So, but congratulations to all of them and wishing you well. Thanks. Okay, so we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. For Mac and iPad users, you are able to access the raise hand icon located on your device, and I believe that it's up in the right-hand corner. So you are able to access. Once the request has been granted by Treasurer Wagner, you will receive a notice on your screen. Click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera icon. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. Okay, so, Ms. Wagner, do we have any folks?
Go ahead, Ms. Sprig.
Hi, everyone. I am Susan Sprig, and I'm with Interact for Health and Growing Well. We work to support school-based health that's offered throughout the Cincinnati Public District. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that we do still have some, we've worked with our partners to continue making school-based health services available, and we have a flyer that outlines for all CPS families how to continue to access medical, dental, mental health care and medication pickup, so if they had medication at the school that they need to access. We have it available electronically as a PDF or a JPG. We also distributed hard copies through the food distribution sites, and we have it in English, Spanish, French, and Arabic. So if anyone would like a copy, there are still some services in person at five centers, although most visits are being done virtually through phone and video whenever possible. So I can make this available to whoever you suggest, if any of you need a copy of it, or you can contact me, I could give my phone number if that would be best for a copy of
I'm sorry, repeat your question, do we want copies? Is that what you're asking?
Right, if any, so the resource coordinators all have copies, but if someone
Okay, good.
Copy, I can give you one.
Yes, if you would, if you could direct that to the board office, so that we can have a copy in the board office?
Will do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sellers.
I believe Ms. Sellers was one who had trouble last time accessing. She's on iPad, I believe. There should be a hand icon in the upper right-hand corner of your iPad. Okay, can you, can you, Jen, just move on to the next, and we'll try to see if Ms. Sellers can get, get to reach us.
She's the only one.
Okay, I'm wondering if we could, is it possible for someone to connect Krista or Jeremy to Julie to make sure she's able to access it? And maybe what we can do is move forward on our presentations and then come back to her. Let, let's do that, if, you know, if she's, if she's ready at that time.
Well, we now have another speaker that's ready, so hopefully we'll bring that person in. I don't have a name, though. See how that one goes. Please introduce yourself, somebody named W.K.
Hi, my name is Allison Goodman. Am I on?
You are on, your, your voice is on, and you can click your video on if you would like.
Okay, oh, look at that. Hi, everyone, hi, thank you all. I wasn't, I wasn't prepared really to speak today, but I've listened in now, and I really appreciate you guys taking the time to do this. I am PTO president at Pleasant Ridge Montessori, and I've had the privilege of working with the athletic department through their Collaborate and Care team at Woodford, that site location and partnering with them, and so thank you to the board, thank you to CPS Athletics, and everything that you guys have done. It, it really is a lot. I know there are, are still gaps, and obviously we're all still worried about a lot of kids and families, but you guys really are doing, doing a lot right now out in the community, and so thank you for that, and I, I will look forward to what happens with Pleasant Ridge Montessori in the future, and some, some expansion ideas perhaps, and maybe I heard a May 11th date mentioned before, so just want to keep that at your forefront as well, but mostly to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right, bye.
Next speaker?
We don't have a next speaker, it's just Julie. She has, she appears to be having technical difficulties.
Okay, if, if someone, maybe if someone can put her in, connect, connect her with the moderator, Jeremy or Krista, maybe they can help her access it on her iPad. So we'll move on. We're going to move on to the presentation. Superintendent, please introduce the first presentation.
Yes, thank you. So this afternoon, I would like to be able to present, Sharra Jackson, she is the Executive Director for the Preschool Promise, and so we'd like to be able to offer the Preschool Promise the opportunity to share an update as to what's happening related to preschool in terms of the, the centers that we support with our district levy dollars, and so I would invite the Executive Director at this time, Sharra Jackson, to begin her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell, and good afternoon. We have, like everyone, been working very hard to kind of recalibrate what we do to meet the immediate needs of the providers and the families and the preschoolers we serve. You will see on the next slide, the priorities that we had in response were really health and safety ones, shifting our operations, addressing the immediate needs of parents and providers, and then turning to educational licensure and compliance needs, then business needs, and then ongoing program delivery. On the next slide, you will also see a snapshot of how our operations have shifted. Thanks to the partnership with CPS, Superintendent Mitchell's leadership, and the great support of Vera Brooks, we were able to distribute learning and instruction materials to all of the preschool providers and arrange contact, contactless delivery for them upon request. Coaching for quality improvement and supports is ongoing, in many cases, providers have more time than ever to devote to that. Tuition assistance, we have updated our absence policy to be aligned with what other publicly-funded childcare is doing as well. Our evaluation process is ongoing. Enrollment, we will be coordinating, of course, with CPS to do that, but our re-enrollment will be posted to our website on May 1st at the request of both providers and parents. And in our staff support fund, we have delayed deployment of that, and we are redesigning our community engagement to do that in a remote way, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. On the next slide, you will see a status update of what is happening with our community providers. So overall, there are 178 community providers, active community providers in the CPP universe, and that includes those both in quality improvement and tuition assistance. Of those, 57 have elected to be pandemic programs during the period of childcare program closure. That equates to about 32%. The breakdown of that happens if we look at our tuition assistance providers, overall there are 27 tuition assistance providers who are pandemic site licensed, that is roughly 34%. We have quite a bit more of QI providers, those that are in quality improvement and not receiving tuition assistance dollars yet. 41% of those quality improvement providers are operating as pandemic sites, and of those, 82% are family childcare providers. Roughly half of all of our family childcare providers that were in tuition assistance have chosen to be pandemic sites. Our goal with community providers has been, from the beginning, to make sure that they stay informed, that we respond to what their needs are, that we encourage them as they continue to educate and reach out to family students, and of course, make sure that their operations are stabilized. There are a couple of things I want to highlight in terms of community providers and how they're faring with pandemic licensure. The temporary pandemic licensure has changed the ratios of students to teachers in a way that the maximum class size can be six to one. Family childcare providers are uniquely positioned to do this because their ratios were comparable at six to one or 12 to one already. Our tuition assistance centers are struggling with this model financially because they were set up at ratios of 10 to one or 20 to one, and are now having to operate at six to one, which is causing a financial strain and burden. In looking at how we best supported our community providers to provide this pandemic services, as well as to be stabilized as providers and be ready for when reopening occurs, we looked to where there were gaps that CPP could offer assistance. CPS, again, did a great job with remote learning to do that. Our partners at 4C at the CCRNR did a fantastic job in communicating with compliance and licensure issues. The requests that we had from most providers and where we saw a gap is in business supports. How does a provider understand and navigate HR and employment issues? How do they apply for EDIL loans or the PPP forgivable loans? How do they immediately access capital and do things to stabilize their business? Do that in to make sure that providers were well-positioned to continue the educational roles that they do by making sure their business was stable. We launched a series of webinars with anything to, from small business coaching and support, loan applications, tax preparation, financial stability, grant applications, and how you walk through that depending on your business type, and we'll be having another series that will launch on Friday on managing stress and mental health issues. We are fortunate that we were able to do this by leveraging free services that were available for instructors that wanted to do that and non-levy dollars to put on these type of programs. We were also fortunate to receive funds from the United Ways COVID-19 Emergency Fund to run a pilot program for those community providers that needed help in preparing their taxes so that they would be eligible for those business supports, forgivable loans and grants. We launched that out to providers today, and do have small amounts of funds to make sure that that is not a concern for providers. The other request that we also received from providers is how do they better have resources to support their parents? On the next slide, what you will also see is what we have done to re-engage parents and make sure that providers could be responsive to what parents' needs were as well. Making sure that we shared the information about the CPS food hubs and services offered by the food banks and others. How we help parents get unemployment benefits and address their immediate concerns and access to school-based healthcare and other free healthcare services. How they could determine whether or not they were a designated worker eligible to have their preschooler continue at a pandemic site. And we've also relaunched our parent-only Facebook group, and we've contacted over 300 parents individually to invite them to participate on an ongoing basis so that they have a space to share information, to hear new news, and that website is updated every other day with a theme, with anything from Mental Health Monday to Hot Topic Tuesdays to Work It Out Wednesdays, to make sure that parents have a space to discuss concerns and challenges and stay engaged with the Preschool Promise. On the next slide, you will also see the collaborations and partnerships that we've engaged in throughout the Early Childhood Education Network, and of course, the partnership with CPS, the local implementation work groups that we're working with and early learning networks, and we were very pleased to launch a new initiative with our Preschool Promise YouTube and our Promise readers. You will see that Dr. Brown was one of our first readers, and many of the CPS board members as well have agreed to be Promise readers, where every day we try to launch a new reader and people reading with their preschoolers for storytime for preschoolers. It really was looking at our trusted relationships that we could share information with, that we could strategize with for reopen, for maintenance, and stabilization for the providers. If you look to the last slide, you'll see what we're thinking about from a strategic perspective in terms of what we need to do moving forward. Of course, there are daily activities that we focus on, and that is really maintaining communication in a tiered structure. How is it best to communicate with providers? We send provider constant contacts and emails once a week. We have new cohorts where every CPP staff member is responsible for 20 providers. They get a personal call and touch bi-weekly. We've increased our Facebook traffic by almost 400%. Those are the things that we do daily to make sure that those connections and lines are open, that we're focusing on student recruitment and retention at all times, and that we're engaging parents to make sure, as we are able with remote learning, that they have the resources that they need, and we're able to do that. We've also been very fortunate to have several remote community engagement opportunities, such as the community councils, like Kennedy Heights, having virtual meetings in which they've asked Preschool Promise to present. So all of the things that we shared with you in terms of community council and engagement presentations that are happening virtually, we're continuing to be engaged with that and bringing our CPS partners with us to talk about what's happening with preschool and enrollment, and how important it is to do their remote learning and engagement. We also are working on that joint strategy and messaging to make sure that we're going to the community with the message that preschool is still important, that there are endless opportunities to engage in that learning even though we're not in the same building, and if there are challenges with access or remote technology, there are resources there to address that. In looking at reopening and coordinating throughout the region to see what that looks like for the Early Childhood Education Network, the concerns that we have or the opportunities that we see are to make sure that every community provider now has a solid business plan and model in how they will operate, that we are focusing on teacher recruitment and retention, and that teachers in this time have an opportunity to do professional development skills, and those are still being made available through our QI coaching cohorts and other classes, including the Workforce Development Council as well as 4C. That we're continuing to work on step up to quality, though JFS has said that there will be no reviews until the end of September. We're continuing to operate with all providers who are willing to go forward, to continue to work on the things that they need to do to be ready to be high-quality providers when reopening occurs, and as much as possible, leveraging private dollars so that we know the additional resources that may be required for reopen and to stabilize and incentivize providers to return to the system are available. So that's kind of a snapshot of what we've been doing at the Cincinnati Preschool Promise.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We'll open it up for comments and questions from board members. Ms. Bowers? Thank you, Sharra, that was excellent, very informative, and it seemed like you've been very busy, your team has been busy. I had a question about your parents-only page. That sounds very interesting. Is that page for staff to provide information to the parents? Are the parents using that as like an intercommunication thing, or is it just a lot of data giving to the parents? Is there any, okay, go ahead, I'll answer that, I have one more.
There's both. We do have a parent who moderates it for us, who was a former Preschool Promise parent. It is a way for us to deploy information directly to parents, but it all, it through those Facebook posts, but it's also an opportunity for them to talk with each other and share ideas and resources because we wanted it to be interactive. In our tiered communication strategy, don't, we don't rely only on social media, but if it is an issue of compliance, of completing forms and documents, anything that is official business that we need parents to do, that is sent out through a direct email to parents rather than posted on social media. So the social media piece is extra information share, not the compliance and regulatory piece.
And then the second and final question for me, in a meeting earlier today, it was a lot of conversation about support for providers, and, and my group was about the other providers, but this is about preschool providers, some of that vicarious toxic stress slash trauma. Are, are you guys able to provide any support for the preschool providers with the shift and change on the dime with having to deliver and meet different expectations as they had before, all of the COVID-19?
Yes, we started with webinars and resources that we were fortunate to tap into from Groundwork Ohio's and, and others, and the Ohio AYEC, that said, what are those stress management tools, mental health tools look like for providers? Our role has always been to say, how do we take information that's available nationally, regionally, and match it up to local contacts? So we've done a series of webinars on that. We also have been directing people to teletherapist sources as well as doing that, pulling other resources as well, but we do, are fortunate to have a board member that will be doing a series of 15 to 20-minute webinars specifically for providers on mindfulness, managing toxic stress, and those other issues, as well as talking about how we help providers when reopen starts to manage stress that children and parents may have as well. But we are welcome additional resources or recommendations that you may have on that. Our goal is to connect providers to the industry experts, not to be the industry experts.
Very good, thank you. Hey, great. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Lindy?
Hey, Sharra, I just wanted to say, I say one thing and ask one thing. I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you're doing. I can only imagine how hard it must be to have all of these new bills coming out in the state and federally and having to figure them out so quickly and turn that around and the information to your team and the providers and the public. I think that's just got to be an enormous amount of work, and I wanted to say thank you for your leadership. And the thing I wanted to ask is, are there things that we at CPS could do to be helpful?
I will say first, again, I cannot say enough about our gratitude and appreciation for Superintendent Mitchell and the entire team, and the resources and the sharing that they have done. I think for now, it is to make sure that the board is mindful that, as you always are, that community providers are an essential part of that preschool system, and that as we change and update it, things may look different than they ever have before, and we're being very careful to make sure that we are responsive to the needs of providers. We are supporting and cheerleaders, but at the end of the day, we are treating providers in many cases like they are small businesses. And as we begin to talk about advocating for community providers and childcare programs and all of the resources that are available in the county, in the state, and federally, it is important to remember that there should be a set aside for those childcare programs and preschool providers as part of the Small Business Network, because the reality is, they were not able to do those quick grabs for many of those resources. They didn't have relationships with bankers, and if we don't protect the investments that have already been made in community providers, And if we don't protect the investments that have already been made in community providers, that investment will need to be tripled to rebuild a system. And when we start to look at forecasting what we need and what the numbers may look like of people that need tuition assistance, it's important to remember that the preschool promise is the last dollar in. So as other publicly funded childcare sources may fall off, that preschool promise dollar may need to increase. That parents that previously weren't eligible under that 300% FPL because of shifting job situations, we may have a whole new population that is now income-eligible for tuition assistance and those services and thinking about that, in addition to just the general numbers of the population that we knew were going to increase. And to think about how we can all work to talk together to not sure, make sure that the preschool providers are ready, but to make sure that we build confidence among parents and community in those community providers, that they are operating in a way that's safe, in a way that is healthy, in a way that has the interest of the education and success of their students at heart. That this is not a mom-and-pop makeshift operation, but it is a business of educators that are really committed to that. And I think if we're just all mindful of that and make sure that community providers and all teachers and educators don't go by the wayside in those discussions would be the best thing for us to promote until we know more about what's going to come down in terms of licensure and shifts we need to make.
Ms. Bolton?
Thanks, Chara.
What you just talked about is really where my question was going. So Ben, thanks for asking that question and getting that response. It is part of the new normal and I know we're going to be spending some time talking about it here at the district as well. And I was particularly interested in the whole class size piece, which is being mandated, that student-teacher ratio and will, you know, how that impacts the business model. But also just the idea that indeed, the additional number of people that will probably qualify, these are all things that need to enter into our financial thinking regarding the preschool promise piece and our expansion as well at CPS. So thanks for that. Great overview of the whole financial new norm, post-COVID kind of experience that you're going to be facing and as will we. So it's great to be sharing that kind of financial, those financial parameters and vision. So thank you for all that you do. Very interesting.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. We really do appreciate you taking the time to join us with your very comprehensive report and we'll look forward to seeing and hearing from you the next time.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we have Treasurer Wagner presenting the budget hearing information.
Yes, just give me a second to get my screen shared. Okay, everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. So this is kind of an update from the conversation we had on Saturday in terms of where we are and what we're thinking about our budget, but there's two key messages here that we want to talk about. First one being that our, the current draft of the fiscal year 21 budget is primarily driven by the strategic plan that the community helped divine design and then we adopted last year. And now we have to turn our thoughts towards what is our new normal post-COVID-19? What are we going to look like and what, what funding changes do we need to make? So I just want to encourage and remind everybody that this is not just a single budget year that we have to consider multi-year impacts. And so whatever we design as our budget or adopt as our budget, it will have impacts on future cash balances. So the upper graph I'm showing you here indicates the green line is our revenue line, basically flat, even though we are growing in enrollment, but because of the state biennial budget, we were frozen at last year's revenue. So we are not obtaining more state revenue with more students and property taxes do not grow with enrollment. So they're reliant on property evaluations. So the bottom slide, or I'm sorry, the bottom graph in the right-hand corner shows you that if we are to incur a 4% decline for the next three years in terms of our state and property tax revenues, you can see the red line starts to dip deeper. If we continue to grow and we have to spend more money, then our cash starts to deteriorate more quickly and we end up at a cash deficit a year sooner than we'd anticipated with the last forecast. This is kind of another picture because, you know, I like to present in visuals a lot, but this shows you that on the top line, the expenditure line, if expenses are down, that's a positive for cash flow. Expenses go up, it's a negative for cash. And then the revenue line is just the opposite. So if revenue is declining, our cash is diminishing. And if revenues increase, then we put more money into the cash balance. So to remind you of the upcoming revenue generating events, levies, we have a levy on the ballot this November, the $48 million levy that helps support our preschool expansion. And then in 2022, we will have our, another renewal levy, the $51 million levy that was last passed in '17, I believe, with, as a five-year renewal. So the good news is the last renewal that we did, the $65 million, is now a 10-year renewal, so we won't have to consider that until 2029. But we do have some levies that are coming up on the ballot so that we need to think about how this new normal will impact those. Just reminding everybody that the strategic plan that's driving the budget is centered around the board strategies, student-centered decision-making, health and safety, community engagement, optimized capability and growth, and of course, always through the lens of equity. And so the next couple of slides I'm going to share with you, things that are in this, the draft budget that we need to start thinking about what is our new normal look like? And so do we need to shift things around? But in terms of student-centered decision-making, I won't read every line to you, but we've, we're investing in the draft budget of $34 million with textbook adoptions, MyTomorrow Vision 2020, Student Voice, expanding our devices, expanding advanced placement. And so we, under a remote learning or a hybrid of a remote learning environment for next school year, some of these things might look a little bit differently. Moving on to the health and safety strategy, we were planning to expand psychologists and specialized classrooms. We added this year an information security function, expanding security services, you know, implementing the healthy start times, really expanding our school social workers and English language learners to a tune of $5.7 million. Under community engagement, we're expanding, adding 14 more resource coordinators, so a total of 51. Expanding parent and family organizations by eight, but those are basically budget-neutral. Investing in our customer care center with a new enrollment project and some professional development and process improvements and then expanding communication staff and services so that we can better engage our public and our employees. Under optimized capabilities, these are mostly through process improvement, so you wouldn't expect to see a lot of spend in this area, but we did add a quality improvement manager and she's doing a lot of training, a lot of working with our staff. We're expanding employee engagement activities every week and added a transportation call center to help with the start of the school year and as changes are happening and then expanding some of the services in the human resource department for better efficiencies. Under growth, we have expanded grade level and I went through some detail on Saturday's slide, but adding grade levels at LEAP and Carthage, Spencer, adding, expanding our early childhood staff because we're growing a lot with preschool. We have about $10 million in the budget for earmarked for facility renovations, starting like, taking over the Lighthouse Charter School as our own and then opening Mozart facility, the preschool on the West Side. In addition to that, there is a list of larger facility renovations and acquisitions that I put in the budget, an estimate of a 2.5 capital lease payment out of our operating budget if we were to go and finance that project. The details and specifics of that growth plan presentation is supposed to come in early May, so I don't want to get out in front, but though in our growth plan, we're investing more than $18 million next year. So I've been getting a lot of questions about what's going on with the pandemic, like what's happening with the pandemic closure, what monies are we going to be not spending or what monies are coming? And so we've done some estimates and these are very rough estimates at this point because we don't know what's going to come up, but we think that with through some of our unfulfilled professional contracts, that we will not spend $7 million. We're going requisition by requisition to see if any of those need to be canceled. We are trying our best to preserve our cash balance so that we don't have to force into furloughs or in a RIF environment. And then looking at all of our salary spend and the trends that we're doing right now, we think with unfilled positions and the fact that we're not spending a lot of overtime in this remote environment, that will bring $12 million back to the cash balance. Excuse me. Now, having said that, we've had some budgetary challenges this year that were unplanned when you adopted the budget at the beginning of the year. That was, we gave all of our employees a 3% cost of living increase effective January 1 and through June 30, and that cost the general fund about $4.5 million. We also know that the state expanded our voucher eligibility that's increased our tuition that was not anticipated by another $4 million. And then if you recall at the, when we were passing the last general fund budget, we had estimated about $7 million of Title I monies that would help offset some of the general fund expenses so that we could put it in the school-wide pool, but it, we were determined we could not use it that way, so that made a change to the bottom line. And then of course, the, we were anticipating the $5 million for the city on the pilot payments. They made their August payment, but then the agreement ended December 31, so they never made the second half of that payment for our fiscal year. They did their calendar year. So most of those increased costs are kind of offsetting, or the savings that we're getting are kind of offsetting those increased costs. We were going to have to increase the appropriations for the year. We've also been incurring some pandemic expenses with new devices and protective gear and some extra costs in terms of people, paying people to be out there to help deliver food. But we're, we think we can cover those through those savings. Now, we're getting a lot of questions also about the CARES Act, which we still haven't seen the money yet, but the documentation tells us we should expect about 20%, I'm sorry, 70% of our Title I allocation, which this year was about $28 million. So 70% of that would bring 20 million to the district, but I'm almost positive we'll have to share that with the auxiliary, since we share all our title funds with auxiliary. Details still coming. And I just want to make sure that people understand this does not replace our Title I allocation. We still anticipate having our Title I allocation next year, but this is a, kind of like a short-term, not gift, if you will, to help us offset pandemic and a new way of living. But the money has to be spent by September 30th, so we have a very short window of time to use this money effectively. And that the expenses are intended to help offset remote learning and I have a list of those allowable expenses. I shared that was on Saturday, but on my next slide, I'll share that as well. I did see yesterday some documentation that the superintendent passed on to me that they are actually putting in writing now that they're going to reduce the state foundation payments and reduce the student wellness fund, which I suspected, but I had not seen in writing. So as soon as we know what those details are, I will certainly share those with the board. So this is a list of the CARES Act allowable uses. They're, they're pretty generic and so I think we'll have a lot of freedom in getting, being able to cover most of our expenses in terms of, you know, more devices, Wi-Fi, supplies, mental health services that are needed and addressing even community needs. So we're still waiting for that, the words on when the money's coming. So another huge impact of the strategic plan and what might impact our new normal is that this budget was planning for 36,960 students, which was 600 over the current year, the year that we're in right now. And that is actually 553 kids over what we were at the previous year. So this is, this enrollment is a trend and not, and an anomaly. And what most people don't understand is that new students doesn't bring us new revenue. We do get a small amount of growth money in the state foundation, but it's not nearly enough to cover the costs that we have to incur to support those students. So in a $650 million budget, as growth decreases, the dollars that are allocable for each individual student. Fixed facility capacity leads to overcrowding and overcrowding leads us to invest capital money to create more space. Capital investments reduces the available cash for operations since our revenues don't grow. The money just gets divided differently. The biggest question is what's going to happen post-COVID-19 to our enrollment? You know, will some of our charter school and private parochial schools not survive this closure? Will those children return to us? Will preschool grow or not? We don't really know yet. And so those are the things we need to continue. This is another visual of what I was trying to explain on as the capital budget grows. So if you see it, the capital budget here, as this as an add-on reduces what's left over for the operation. That's all I'm trying to share here is that the pie doesn't get bigger, it just gets shared differently. And the very odd thing here is that historically, you know, in the 27 years I've been with the district, we've had to make cuts because our enrollment was declining. But we're in an odd situation where we're growing and we're having a lot of success through our strategic plan, yet we're still facing possible cuts because of the revenue drop or projected revenue drop in the economy, unsure. So I'm going to pause right there and ask, does anybody have any questions on what I've talked about so far?
Okay, Mr. Lindy followed by Mr. Morosky.
Yeah, I think, I think I have a list of questions that I can come back to, Jen. I think one of them, it does feel short-term, is like if, if, I think you're making a very clear and strong case that it's really challenging to grow. Because look, we get more kids, our costs go up. We get more kids, we don't get more money. So we're having to spread the same resources across a larger number of kids. Fewer dollars per kid creates all kinds of challenges. Then a question is, why, why did we put growth in the strategic plan? It seems like you could, you could alternatively take an approach that says, let's, let's not increase additional kids, let's prioritize improving the outcomes for the current set of kids we have and then do that with more resources to be able to do it rather than trying to grow enrollment. I'm sure this is something that people thought about. I'm asking this as like a new guy question because I just wasn't here for that part of the plan and would love to learn more about it.
I think that would be a great discussion amongst board members, yes. I mean, the simple, the simple answer is, kids are coming back. We can't turn them away, so we have to figure out a way to make space for them.
Right. Okay, Mr. Morosky had his hand up and then followed by Ms. Bates.
Thanks, President Jones. My question is pretty simple and this came up on Saturday in passing and I'm just curious if the percentage increase we experienced in 2008, 2009 with the recession, if that number is helpful at all or if we're looking at like what a percentage might be as we plan for the fall? Because we're going to have an increase because people have realized how great our programs and our education, our teachers, et cetera, facilities are. And obviously, in my opinion, at least it's obvious, we're going to have an additional increase to that because as was brought up on Saturday, I believe by Ms. Bates or Ms. Bolton. A, the voucher program was frozen, which in my humble opinion is good. At the same time, that's going to add to the increase, I think. And then Ms. Bates or Ms. Bolton, whoever brought up the point, and I of course saw when I was in the Catholic school system, that, that voucher is only about $5,000 and people, I don't assume are going to And people, I don't assume are going to be able to cover the rest of it, so I think that'll add. So I guess it's a two-part question. I don't need an exact answer. But what was the percentage in the recession and are we looking at that? Do we have a way to predict? At all what the extra boost will be?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Ask it again.
All right, in two thousand, during the recession, we had an increase in enrollment and we've been increasing, you know, an increase since then. What was that percentage in two thousand eight? Is it reasonable to look at what we experienced then and put it to today, like to plan for the fall? Because in my opinion, we're going to have more students because of this. And if for no other reason than because of the voucher freeze and the impact on income. Is that percentage knowable and two, is it helpful and if not, is there a way? To try to crystal ball this thing for the fall?
I can't answer off the top of my head. I know it's available, but I will get that for you. We'll gather the information.
Okay, Ms. Bates?
Yes, a couple of things. First, to go back to Mr. Lindy's question, why aren't we focusing on the ones? That we have instead of a focus on growth? And this board for many years has had the, has embodied the philosophy that. All the students in Cincinnati Public School boundaries are our students, whether they're private, public, charter. Voucher or ours. So that's part of it. Voucher and charter students are expensive. You know, not only for the, you know, the pass-through dollars, but the transportation dollars. And then when we get the children back, particularly from charters, especially the ones that have closed, they're expensive to remediate. So by having them, and, and we have data to show that if we have children from kindergarten and they stay with us. That we see steady improvement. I don't know if that's changed, but that's always been the trend. So practically speaking, that's another reason why we wanted to attract students. To our district because financially, you know, philosophically, it, it was what the board believed was, was right. And financially, it's, in, in the long run, it's, it's worth our while to have the children from the beginning. Instead of remediating or, you know. All the expenses that come into play with vouchers, charters, transportation and so forth. So I don't know if any other, Eve may have some insight on that as well. The other question I have, and I know that. A lot of the departments are involved with the conversation with the Council of Great City Schools, and certainly we can't afford a federal lobbyist at this point. That's obvious. But they do an awful lot of work for us. And one of the asks was that we contact our legislators, our delegation. And request that schools receive part of the infrastructure dollars coming from the feds. And I don't know if, if anyone has, if the staff has gotten more direction on that from the Council of Great City Schools? Or if they've received, you know, a script that other districts are using? I know we have a meeting coming up on Friday, and I know Boston has, has broached this. So my question is if, if the administration is, is, this isn't on the radar for them. Certainly, you know, the board can, can work on that as well, and it's, and it's worthwhile if we can get some federal dollars that may, you know, that may help us with the school or so.
I just got a text saying that there, we have meeting. In Senate offices next week during their federal funding with Brown and Portman, so. I know that Krista is actually meeting very soon, if not tomorrow, the next day with our lobbyists to start pressuring for that kind of assistance. So we'll add that to the list.
Yeah, infrastructure. It, it sounds like that, that's a good possibility.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? I'm having trouble seeing hands. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Just a first addition regarding the growth piece. First of all, if, if a family lives within our school district, I believe firmly that our district can offer the better. Education and the most services, so I want our children within our particular school district. Also, what Mel said, that it costs more for us regarding the charter. We lose more money. Through the charter and voucher piece because of the per student allotment. The other major thing, as I recall over the last dozen years, is that our region made a commitment, whether it was the city or the county or the school district or whomever. That we wanted to regrow our population, particularly in the city of Cincinnati. Because we've been through so many years of decline in population, so it was a kind of a mutual collaborative partnership. To see what we could do to bring people back and our, and it's really not just the board's philosophy. But we have to remember that our, our community spent one point two billion dollars, seventy-eight percent of which was local money. To rebuild the district and the result was instead of a dying district, we have, we have a vibrant district. But I'm so glad Jen brought up the fact that the difficulty now, of course, is, is that we have to, we might be or need to make other cuts or rearrangements or whatever at a time of growth instead of decline. And that is harder to, to fathom. If I could just ask Jen again to help me out. If we look, and this is a layperson looking at a budget. We have had some savings as a result of the pandemic. And we've had some costs as a result of the pandemic. I like to see those two numbers when we get them firmer. If we can get them firmer, that they, they count against each other. And, and this CARES money, again, I think I mentioned on Saturday, I see that as that, the Obama. Monies when he first became president, which were stimulus monies, if you will, because of the financial piece. I think Mike's right to bring back up that whole oh eight, oh nine, the, the great recession, so to speak. Because that is a one-time amount of money. I'd rather see that attributed or used to move us toward this new norm. Or keep us moving toward the strategic plan rather than necessarily. I mean, it's, it's probably semantics, but at least in my small brain, I'd like to see that money kind of go towards how we move ahead. I think the last thing is that. We bureaucracies and you see it with the city and you see it with the county and everybody else. We all have commitments to the current way we do things. But so often when a crisis like this happens, we invest in the past instead of. Invest as best we can in the future. I'd like, I'd like to be thinking that way, especially with the, with the strategic plan in place. And we would have to merge it, change it, whatever, but I really appreciate the, the presentation, but I would, I'd like to see the. Equation of the savings versus the cost of a pandemic somewhere down the line, not too far away.
Absolutely. We're still, we're still spending, so we're, yes, we will give you some updates. I just want to keep in mind and caution everybody that this CARES Act is a one-time deal, so you don't want recurring expenses being funded out of that. Because then it hits the general funds, right? Nobody ever wants to cut anything when the funding ends. Everything comes back to the general fund. Okay. Any more questions before I move on?
Yeah, Mr. Morosky has a question and I also just have a question or a comment, so Mr. Morosky.
Mine is very quick. So regarding the CARES Act being one time, I mean, there is going to be a two point O. It's still stuck in Congress unless anyone knows something I do not. And Ms. Fisher Jackson, you know, brought up. A point in her presentation about staying ahead of the game regarding dollars for these family centers that are, are really in danger right now. And we need them in the community. We need these community providers. So to that end. And regarding our lobbyists and Krista meeting with the lobbyists. And I know Ms. Bates is closely connected with the council right now, and that's awesome. And I know the council is also thinking about staying ahead of it. But I would just like to add to our agenda of influencing that second piece because the CARES is one time, but the second one is going to be substantive too. And hopefully. You know, hopefully we can get something out of that too. So that's all. I guess it's more of a comment than a question.
Yeah, thank you. Treasure Wagner, I, I know you are going to finish the presentation, but can you refresh? For us, what, we agreed on a timeline for having to approve. Sort of our budget to move on to the next step, and I think the theme and everybody understands that. We, we have to relook our priorities around the strategic plan. I'm just trying to get it in my head timeline wise so that we can be thinking about how we have that dialogue, when and how we have that dialogue.
Yeah, I have a couple of slides that'll address that.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so are you ready for me to go on?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so next steps. Good segue.
There it is.
We have to define what our new normal is. You know, we're thinking and talking about superintendent on Saturday was talking about, you know, AMPM or Monday, Wednesday, Friday shifts, or what does that look like? And what kind of ed center support, what we need in that kind of environment? And then what does that, how does that change the strategic plan initiatives? Then we have to adjust our budget priorities to fund that new normal, right? So coming up in June, so originally we wanted the budget approved by May so that we can start requisitioning against it to get all our contracts in line by June, July one. Well, things have changed just a little bit, so. We have option A, where we can delay that May adoption until June, and you can adopt a full budget if we can get to what our new normal looks like, what's it going to cost by June? Or option B, which is kind of my preference, is to adopt a ninety-day budget in June. And then adopt a full budget in September, where we know more about what our life is going to look like. You know, I've been hearing rumors about cancellation of college football season, so it made me think about what's going to happen with our extracurricular activities. And so. You know, is a new normal needed? So what we don't, we want, we need to know what our social distancing rules are going to be when it applies to a classroom or extracurricular activities. What kind of health and safety provisions are we going to have to provide? We're going to be experiencing a restrictive and negative economy for at least three years is what we're hearing. You know, what does remote learning and management look like? You know, what are the challenges to families? Because some parents are going to have to return to work, but they can't leave their third, second and third grader at home alone to do remote learning, right? So we'll have to come up with some kind of a hybrid. And we're still, you know, trying to challenge the digital divide. Making great progress on that, but it's not solved. And then also in the secondary fashion, what's going to happen with those, our partners that have been suffering during this closure? Are they not going to be able to provide the services we're used to having available for our children? What, what might that look like? Those are just things that are, you know, we've been thinking about. So kind of like the open conversation, discussion needs to happen about what is, how do we define? The difference between our current state right now, which is a completely virtual environment. So what is our new norm? And some kind of a blended version. And what's the role of the strategic plan in defining that, implementing it, and how will our economics impact our decisions? You have. Six. Eight more minutes. Between now and the end of June. And the most urgent tax tasks that we have to accomplish are, we are working really hard to preserve our cash balance. So that we don't have to do what other organizations are doing and lay people off. We have to pass a May forecast, and so we're working on, you know, the data, the economic data changes every day. We're just being inundated with more and more information. And then we have to pass a fiscal operating budget by the end of June or do the ninety-day plan and do the full one by September. So I, I felt like maybe this is a place to pause and you can have a discussion about what that, how do we define, what process will we use to define that new normal? Between now and when we have to present a budget.
Okay. Board members have questions or comments? Mr. Lindy, I saw your hand first.
Great, thanks, Carolyn. Jen, I just wanted to voice my support for your idea of option B. I like the idea of creating some additional flexibility. And I completely agree with you that we're going to know so much more in a few months over what the fall is going to look like than we know now. I'd also like to give the superintendent as much runway as possible to figure out what the, what the plan should look like. And I think on, on, to this point on the slide, like process for defining our new normal. My thought is, and I would love to ask this question to Laura, like this would be, you know, your base. To figure out like what both, what is the process that's going to make sense to figure out what the, what, what the plan for next year is and. What kind of financial resources would that require? And I'm imagining it would have some, some. Like call them contingencies or just like a decision tree in it where it's like, we actually still are not going to know in July with perfect information what's going to be true in November. So we have a Plan A, a Plan B and a Plan C. And the budget is what would allow us to go down any one of those paths, depending on the information that we learn over the next couple of months. So just, I mean, to synthesize, I wanted to say how much I like your idea of option B, Jen. And that my assumption would be that whatever that process is for defining our new normal should be run by Laura. And that she would make a recommendation to us, having spent some real time thinking about this, what she thinks the best option is. Walk us through the trade-offs and the pros and cons, and that we could do that over the next couple of months. Does that sound right to you? Do you see that differently?
No, I was just trying to be respectful of the board's involvement in developing the strategic plan and. You know, not making assumptions with the superintendent and our team are incredibly brilliant and got us to where we are. And so we, we will work really well together to do that.
Other questions? Mr. Morosky, I saw you followed by Ms. Bolton. Do you have your hand up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Wait a minute, Mr. Morosky followed by Ms. Bolton, Ms. Bates?
Yeah, I can put me in there.
Okay, after Ms. Bolton. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, President Jones. I largely am seconding what Mr. Lindy said. Option B is the most reasonable to me. I don't think option A is, is reasonable personally. And I also feel like as far as process. Maybe I'm naive, but I feel from where I'm sitting. I feel that we've been living this process under the superintendent's leadership, i.e. In conversations with other folks around the state, what is it looking like for them, understanding what these new best practices are? Not to keep picking on Ms. Bates, but also with all the information we're getting from Council of Great City Schools and what other districts. That are like districts or larger districts and combining all of that. Now, there is the one piece that we are Cincinnati and we're unique. That I feel we need to maybe dive down in on a little deeper, but I feel like we're also doing that with the superintendent's daily memos. What things look like in individual sites, what things look like in individual buildings. Our new process of communicating with the superintendent we designed on Saturday of, of sort of collating all of our community concerns in one place. I think is going to really position us well to have a budget for ninety days in June. Until the fall, if that is in fact the way we go, which again, just to put a pin in that is, is what I would support. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bolton followed by Ms. Bates?
Yeah, just to, to be a little contrarian on, on all of that. I, I do agree that we have the best administrative team and hopefully the, you know. Employee engagement and support and commitment. I feel good about what everybody's going to be able to do, but I would say first and foremost. Much, much of this decision or these multiple decisions rise even above the superintendent. Because it's the community that has to help us figure out the new normal. It cannot necessarily be only the administration, and I'm going to assume the administration's going to want that kind of guidance. Even some degree of direction, but we are obligated to represent the community's vision of what perhaps that new or different district. Looks like, or we keep it as it is. So I think there's a big role for the board to play. But the other piece that I would, that I would add. Is that I think it makes most sense to do the September piece, or it's, it's not necessarily September, but later than June, right? I think that's what it is. That makes more sense. The, the most telling thing about what's going to be the future is the November presidential election. So the, the September doesn't help us there. So the, the September doesn't help us there either any more than, than June does. I, I am supportive of not trying to pass anything except the five year forecast in May. My worry about waiting until September is that we have five or six contract negotiations going out with our labor organizations right now. And if we have to wait till September to figure out what we're talking about regarding our budget, because so much of it is not in our control, I don't know how we are negotiating that in good faith. And I think if we wait to try to delay too much, it might, it might stifle success at the, at the table.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Bates.
Yes, I mean, we have no idea if we're even going back to school in August at this point, seriously. And anyway, we, I, I like the idea of option B because especially if we do move forward with the levy, that's going to open up a whole new community conversation around our budget. And bring, you know, because of course, what people are saying on the street now is the schools are closed, where's all the money? So we really have to keep our, the community engaged in where it really is going. Well, you know, we, we have staff that are still working behind the scenes. We still have to maintain our buildings, you know, we, we need. Another area that we really haven't discussed is, you know, more professional development for our staff because they're going to be doing things really, really differently. You know, first grade teachers may not be moving their kids to second grade. You know, they, they, there may be, you know, different, we, we may be what we used to call in, in days prior looping, and teachers are not trained to do that, for instance. I'm just throwing that out. That's for you all to figure out. But I, I do anticipate, you know, a, a bigger line item for professional development going forward to do things in the new normal way.
Thanks. I'll just say at this point, I, I'm kind of in support of option B as well. And, and also thinking too, that we could include those recommended options that Mr. Lindy referenced so that we have something to look at. I think though, as Ms. Bates, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Bolton was talking about the need to involve the community. My question is, would this be something that we could involve our former step committees in helping us to think through the priorities and, and, you know, what the community needs as a possibility? But also thinking that the board itself is going to have to make some decisions around some of the board priorities related to the strategic plan. So that's kind of a comment and a question. Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I, I appreciate your, your comment on that. I think the community must be involved and we have limited time and limited opportunities to do that. I think the step committee might be a good idea. But also, I think these, many of these decisions and many of these parameters are based, obviously, as Jen mentioned, on our priorities, our strategies. And for us to make those adjustments in the strategic plan and in, in developing the new norm or what have you, that does require the board to have some major discussions. And I'm thrilled that we have at least this many meetings, as Jen pointed out, that we can do that. It's because it should be a full board kind of experience. So I, I, I second what you said.
Okay. And I'm actually, and given that we have all these dates and, you know, I, I would even suggest dedicating a meeting to this conversation. As, as I think about this question, defining our new normal, the only thing that I can say is that, again, and people have alluded to this, is that, you know, the, the governor is saying, saying, and I think I've heard leadership say, it may be some form of blended, I see you, Mr. Master. It may be some form of blended learning. But, but, you know, if I had to answer the question today, I couldn't because I just don't know. And I'm not quite sure, somebody said this, I think, President Wagner. We don't know what's coming down from the state or when it's coming. And so the sooner, I mean, I think if we grapple with some of this now over the next month or so to kind of figure some of this stuff out, I, it, it will certainly make me feel comfortable about if we decide to go to option B, where we are in September to make some of those decisions when we know more. And, okay, so Mr. Master?
Yes, I must be off your screen because I've had my hand up kind of throughout this meeting so far.
Yeah, you're, you're in a tiny, you look real tiny in comparison to everybody else. And I know that has to do, maybe you're sitting back so I couldn't see you. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. But, you know, I think that we're obviously not the only ones going through this. Every company and organization's trying to figure this out. And we can obviously make lots of guesses and, I guess, assumptions on what may happen. But I, you know, I think whoever just said that, maybe I think it was you. I do think that we should have a meeting to align on what do we think the variables are that would then informal, I'm sorry, inform our direction? And kind of lay out kind of those basic, what we think we know today. And as those things change, then we know we can kind of evolve and adjust our plans going forward. But no question, we need to build as much flexibility into our process as allowed by law so that we can, you know, evolve as we get that information. And, you know, I'd also think that in the spirit of just making sure our public understands where we are today. Somebody took the words right out of my mouth, that we need to make sure we are communicating, you know, we're not just not spending dollars. There are lots of expenses that, that we are responsible for that continue, including staff, contracts that are ongoing, that we're contractually bound to, et cetera. Because I have seen that chatter in social media that, hey, well, since you have all these extra millions, when people went, one person went so far as to say, we should get a refund on our taxes. Others said, we should be personally driving the computers, breakfast, lunch, et cetera, to students because we have all this extra money. And yes, there may be some cost savings, but there are also some costs that we hadn't anticipated. And let's be crystal clear that revenue is not increasing. And just, just helping people understand, and this kind of ties back to that previous growth question, why we went there? Well, it highlights the need to make sure that everybody understands education funding and that, you know, state funding was frozen for us, but not our dollars that are frankly crippling this district going to charter schools. And, you know, millions of dollars that we can't control. And so kind of the growth, I'd rather have them in our district than them going to somebody else and us having to pay twice what we were originally getting, that we're actually not getting extra anymore because the state funding's frozen. So to me, this is a, an opportunity, and we've talked about this before, to really help our community understand school funding and understand where these dollars come in and where they go out. And understand that this crisis is affecting several sources of revenues for us as well as some of our expenses. And because of that, we have to continue to fund our schools. And then, you know, obviously engage in whether that was Ms. Bolton or whomever. I think that was a great idea to engage our step committee because we have to figure out how to bring the community along in this journey as we figure out that new norm and, and think through these assumptions.
Great. Okay, Ms. Bowers, did I see your hand? Followed by Mr. Lindy.
I would, I would concur with Ryan and Carolyn about having a separate meeting or one of our meetings specifically dedicated to having this discussion. You know, everything laid out and talking about options and, and what it looks like. What I don't know, Jen, is, is there like a timeline you need for this discussion to happen within for you to make the decision about Plan A or Plan B? And I agree with Carolyn regarding the step committee. I was thinking that, trying to reengage of that committee to help kind of sift out, get some ideas of what a new norm would look like, especially with regards to the initial strategic plan. So Jen, is there a timeline? I know it was suggested that maybe one meeting can be specifically dedicated to kind of talking about this. What would that look like for you?
So, yeah, we'll take advantage of whatever time you can help devote to it. But in terms of my requirements, I have to file a five year forecast by the end of May. So that last, usually the last board meeting in May will be dedicated to that. And it's usually a 10, 15 minute presentation and then a vote. The Plan B option, where we adopt a 90 day plan, would just be an estimate of, you know, take the current year budget, divide it four times, come up with a quarterly value. So at least it gets us ready to get the school started and I could start paying bills again. Excuse me. So those newer board members may not understand that the board has to appropriate the funds before I can issue check one every year. And so that 90 day allocation will help us get started, get moving, get things going. So it just buys us a little bit more time. And that doesn't have to be done until the end of June.
So May would be, I mean, like within the next few scheduled board meetings, Jen?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, she outlined, she summarized that on a previous slide. So like the end of June, I think, some substantive decision.
But I, right, but with regards to when we need to set aside our time that would be beneficial for her?
Yeah, I, I get it. And, yeah, we'll have to decide that. Okay, Mr. Lindy?
Yeah, thanks, Carolyn. I do, I, what I'm hearing from the group is that there's a ton of enthusiasm around the option B, around the 90 day and the, and the later budget. I think that's great. I do think there's meaningful disagreement on the other question about what the process should look like. And what I wanted to do is try to surface what I think the disagreement is. And then I wanted to make a case for why I'm on the side that I'm on. And then ask probably Carolyn, like, what's the right way to make the decision on this? And whose decision is it? But I think this question of like, how do we get from where we are now to a really clear picture of what the new normal is? That is then, you know, built into that budget. And I think there's a range of, there's a range of ideas on the table. One of, and I would, a set of terms that's helpful for me is the difference between collecting input and giving feedback. And the way I've, I was taught to understand those terms is input is before a process gets started, you get input on vision and direction. And I think one set of ideas is around a step committee and around the board, having some input with Laura on, on the front end for what the vision and direction should be for this new normal. On the other end is what I'm advocating for. And I'll, I'll share what it is and I'll share why. And it's not an uninvolved board. It's just a sequencing piece, that Laura does the thinking with her team on a proposal for what she thinks the vision for our new normal should be. And what the board does is weigh in with feedback. So we're still very engaged. I love the idea of having a meeting on this. I think that's really important. But the reason I like this idea of, of it starting with Laura and we providing feedback rather than doing step committee and doing kind of front end input from the board is primarily that I think doing that well takes real, real time. And as I understand the strategic planning process, there was a real commitment to get gathering that kind of input not that long ago. And I think we're in the middle of a crisis. And I think that, that the volume of decisions that are going to need to get made, the speed with which they're going to need to get made, and the level of expertise it takes in order to really understand what those trade offs are and what's going to work in CPS and what isn't going to work in CPS and why. I just think the expertise with that is best situated with Laura. And so on this question of like, how do we get from point A to point B? I wanted to make my case for why I think starting with Laura's team and the board providing feedback would, would be the best thing to create a good outcome for kids and parents quickly than a situation where we're doing more front end input to which Laura and her team are then responding. So that's, that's my thought. I, I do think there's disagreement here. I think disagreement is healthy. I think that helps get us to better decisions. But I wanted to share that and ask Carolyn what, what she thought made the most sense around next steps there.
Well, I, I think we have to come to some consensus as a board to what the next steps are. But since you posed that question to me, I mean, I wrote down too, that, I think I said that, that having our leadership, the superintendent and her team kind of lay out various scenarios and options for us to, to respond to is always helpful. And we've had a great deal of success with that process. However, I do believe very strongly that we, in order to, that we must have community input from, from day one. Now, maybe that input comes after the superintendent develops these options, but we still. And, and some of that can be done at our board meetings. I mean, some of that, if, because I would assume that we're going to be talking about this probably at every board meeting. But I would assume that through hearing of the public or, or inquiries that community makes. But, but then that people will comment. But then also, what is a, a more formal process to do it? And I think that to me, having our step committee be involved with that because it just, it, it's a process of diversity of members of our community who gave us and helped us get to these priorities. So I don't, I don't know if that helps, but I, I think trying to figure out how we include them in the beginning is, is where I am. But I do support having the superintendent provide us with various options. Other comments or questions? Ms. Bolton?
I, I don't think it's really any different than our normal process from a standpoint that the superintendent gets some sorts of parameters, some sort of reading from the community via the board or via directly by the community. And within that, then the expertise is to figure out what to recommend. And the superintendent tends to recommend options, which I find very professional and it's kind of an engagement piece. I don't think it's all that different than deciding about the stadium, deciding about whatever. The thing that I think is different is that based upon what Jen has talked about and what Laura has talked about previously, is that we are trying to envision perhaps a, a new phase for this district, a new chapter for the district. And that has to be with community effort. That, and that's great. Ben mentioned we've got the strategic plan and that's why I think it's, you know, gold letter on that. But also your idea about involving the step committee and in doing this in a, in a, in a reasonable amount of time. I, I honestly think we're farther than we think we are because of the leadership of the district and the administrative side of the building and upstairs in the treasurer's office. But I, the community must somehow be involved. And these, these decisions or this design has to be certainly driven by the superintendent, but it has to reflect what the community is thinking. And if we can't do all of that, it's at least where the board is. That's part of the strategic plan.
Yeah. Other comments? Did I see a hand? Okay. Okay, so we, we, to, to respond to Treasure Wagner's question, what is our process? Here, here's what I'm hearing, okay? And, and we can come to some agreement about this. I'm hearing that we're recommending that the superintendent and the leadership team develop options for, for the board to respond to. And the question, which I'm asking for, for response from the, the board, consensus from the board, is do we include, do folks agree or want to include the step committee at some point? If, if so, when? But, but, okay, so that's one question. Secondly, it looks like there's consensus around option B. So there are some decisions that have to be made by the end of June? So there are some decisions that have to be made by the end of June? Yeah, but that Option B, it, this gives us a little more time and flexibility to make some other decisions. I also heard and that we're going to have community input and feedback all along as part of our board meetings. If we're going to have this on our agenda for a lot of our board meetings. But also the question, Bates, do we want to really, once we get those options, just dedicate some time to really working through? Because none of us know what the new normal is going to be. We just don't know. But if, do we want to spend like the bulk of one or two or three meetings to maybe pull all this information together? So give it some focus. Did I make sense? Are people with me?
Yep.
Hello?
Yeah, Carolyn.
Okay, yes, Mr. Messer.
Yeah, so I just wanted to put an exclamation point on the, you know, just how we operate is we have that community engagement. And I think if we said, hey, superintendent layout kind of the option, she probably has most of that ready to go for us to kind of look at. So, you know, I think we need to make sure that we are engaging specifically the step committee that represented all sorts of various stakeholder groups. And maybe that's not it, maybe it's another group if some of those aren't able to, given the circumstances right now. But if our strategic plan isn't evaluated based on how incredibly different our world is right now and will likely be for some time. I mean, at least at my work, we're anticipating at least a 24-month impact to our day-to-day operation. So what we thought was our strategic plan is now going through a revisit to say, what does our, what are those assumptions that have changed based on that original plan? And making sure that everybody's aligned that it may evolve and we may make some changes to what we thought our priorities were. Think the same thing's going to happen here. And as we make any changes, I think we need to absolutely make sure those stakeholders at the table with us in making that decision. So I just put an exclamation point on.
Okay, I'd like to ask the superintendent if she wants to weigh in on this conversation. Any thoughts?
Yes, so we have spent a lot of time thinking about the new normal. We do have a proposed recovery plan. We actually started the development of the recovery plan before we actually left foreclosing the actual buildings. We are constantly getting community feedback through email messages, through Facebook, as well as through the board. We will be prepared to provide some options for the board to consider. That will be a wide range of things. We will use data and information and research that we're getting from other districts, but also from other nationally recognized organizations who have some of the best thinking on this. In addition, we will look at some other countries and how they are starting to bring kids back into school and learn from them. I believe Susan Bunty shared with me today Denmark students went back to school this week and they structured it very, very small classrooms of 10 kids. Actually, it was less than 10 kids because there were 10 people in the room total. So if there's, you know, two adults, then it's eight kids. And so we are thinking about all of those things and we'll be ready to provide the board with some options when the board is ready.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
I, when I think in terms of the new norm, I think of not just transitioning back, but to what are we transitioning to? What, what is it that it's going to be? Not just the, the recovery piece or the transition or, or unfortunately even having like the state mandate as they did for preschool, that you have to have this many kids and only this many kids or all these mandates that will have to be following. I, I see it also as this visioning as to what will be the new district. Not just how we'll get back to something that we once had necessarily. But I just think that that's part of the whole big discussion, why I think the community has to be involved and, and why the board needs to find consensus on some of these issues. We are literally re-envisioning where we are and where we need to go. It's, it's not just transitioning, but I, the experts are, are, are leadership team. There's no question about that. But I see this as a visioning piece, which is why I agree that the community needs to be involved in some way with that.
Okay, so just, I'm thinking, and again, I'm, I, it's about process. I think we agree on a lot of things. I think in terms of moving forward, I think we, we have, and it's on our Board Matters, we were going to talk about the board schedule. And I'm trying to just move us forward in thinking, so if, if, if what we can do is agree to use that time, and again, this is going to take some coordination with leadership around when they're going to be prepared to present these options and that. And, and given also that we've asked the superintendent to report on May the 11th about the growth plan. So we have to think about all of those pieces that are out there right now and how to develop some sort of timeline of presentation or board meeting where we can really focus on this conversation alone. So if, if folks are amenable to that, I would recommend that we just move forward. We're trying to nail down some of these in our upcoming agendas, including how we include the community in the planning.
Great.
Are we good? Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Bolton.
I'm just, I just wanted to follow up on whether or not, because I've now gotten some texts from, from folks. Have we reached the consensus that the step committee should be at least one of our calls or one of our go-tos or not?
I, my understanding from what I hear, I didn't hear, most of the people didn't say yea or nay, but I didn't hear any, I mean, I didn't really hear any opposition. I just think we have to figure out how to bring them in, when is it appropriate, you know, that kind of thing. Am I, am I correct? Yes, superintendent? Superintendent?
I just have a question for clarification. So since the step committee was a committee of the board, will the board take the lead on pulling that committee back together?
We, we should, yes. Yes. We'll do that.
Good call.
So, so here's my, so it's my suggestion on that. E, who was on the committee? Ms. Bolton, Mr. Messer?
Messer and Ms. Bowers.
Okay, that might be, that might be grounds for you all to do your meeting because we were going to talk about committee meetings and Board Matters. Or maybe that's something we can talk about and you all can coordinate that. And then we have to coordinate with leadership. We have to coordinate with the superintendent and all that. Okay?
That's good.
We'll work through that. Okay.
Mr. Messer was chair.
Okay, all right. So we'll talk, Mr. Messer.
Thank you.
And Superintendent Mitchell and Treasurer Wagner and step committee and everybody. Okay. All right. Anything else on this subject? Ms. Wagner, thank you. Thank you for the very comprehensive report.
You're welcome.
Do you need any, you need anything else from us about that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. All righty, where are we? Okay, Board Matters. So committee meetings, Ms. Bolton is going to talk a little bit about that. We just touched on it a little bit. We had it on the agenda, then we took it off the agenda, then we decided to put it back on. So very timely, Ms. Bolton.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate you speaking with me about this today. It's kind of in three parts, how we best use those eight days of board meetings is one. But also which committees may need to reconvene for specific purposes? Does the student achievement committee need to reconvene? Does finance need to reconvene? Does policy need to reconvene and the like? And also then would ad hoc need to meet so that ad hoc could then present back to the board the suggestions regarding our protocol? So we get that in the books as well. So it was about how to use the rest of our board meetings. It's also what committees need to reconvene if any and for what specific purpose. And then also we're getting the protocol able to be passed after ad hoc reviews or whatever the suggestions were. I know we've all received the suggestions somewhere along the line, but I don't think ad hoc has had an opportunity to meet, to, to review and then give a final recommendation. Is that what you want me to?
Yeah, so, so my response to that is that there were the two committees that Ms. Bolton just identified, ad hoc and, and student achievement. There were some areas of priority that, that warranted that those two committees either meet or come to some agreement about how they proceed. With ad hoc, it is the ad hoc recommendations. And I had spoken with Ms. Bates a couple of times. And I believe Ms. Bates said, you said that we had given the feedback, but you all had not had a chance to discuss them and finalize them. So is that something that you can reasonably do and, and put it on the agenda for approval in the, within the next couple of meetings or so? That's my question to you, Ms. Bolton, Ms. Bates?
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm sure our committee is capable of that, but we're also working under a new normal and.
Right, exactly.
You know, we could finalize what we had the way it was. But for instance, we may have these, you know, these blue jeans meetings indefinitely. You know, so do we, do we include that in the protocol? I mean, it's, I think that right now there's so much up in the air that it's, you know, I'd like to hear from Ms. Bowers and Mr. Messer. But right now I'm not so sure that this is a priority. And if we aren't going to be upending some of our decisions and reconvening and repeating the work down the line. And besides that, it's, you know, it's, it requires administrative work as well. And I'm not sure that this is a priority to take away from what the administration is doing.
Yeah, and, and, and that's exactly what we're asking because you're the chair of that committee. Pam's, Ms. Bowers is chair of student achievement. We need to know the committee's perspective on, is this something that we need to sort of fold into our new normal and plan for that? Do we anticipate, because when I think about what was in the ad hoc recommendations, it had mostly to do with how we operate internally to the board. It was on our protocols. So there are going to be some new normals, but it may be we just pass what we have and then move on. And if we need to change, we can always do that. But it's, it's really up to you and your committee. So you need to tell us.
Well, I think if we can get material in writing from Phyllis and Pat and review what, what needs, what was decided, then we could decide if this would be an imposition on staff or it's something that the three of us can work out and bring forward.
Okay. Let's go with that. Ms. Bowers?
I just want to be clear. There were some things from ad hoc that were presented to the, well, I'm sorry. There were some items from student achievement that were presented from the board, to the board, recommending that things should be moved to a certain other committee. So those things are like floating around. There hasn't been any consensus. So I don't know if we could approve ad hoc without deciding on the recommendation that's from student achievement. So that's like some unfinished things that are done, that, that are out there.
The unfinished business, as I recall, is that the committees were working on their work plan. And that the work plans, the, the, the final decision based of the work plans was based in the work of the ad hoc. So that's part of the discussion about whether or not that needs to happen in order for the committees to move forward. But I think what Ms. Bates is saying is that we're trying to define a new normal. So the committees may look different, may operate differently and what have you. Do we want to do that now or, and, and especially considering that it would have to involve administration? And we've already said to administration or agreed that we want, didn't want to put more work on them in that way. So that's the question to, to, to consider. In your case, Ms. Bowers with student achievement with the one specific thing, I do think that that's a high priority and we need to address that. So.
For us, we have, there's a meeting schedule for next Friday for that, that's going to be given out to the public. For that one item, only for that one thing. But I thought your question to Ms., and I thought your question to Ms. Bates was asking her to decide on, on something. And that's why I asked the question about the flow of things around. Okay.
Yes, and I'm, I'm just trying to clarify because it is, I mean, you know. So, okay, Ms. Bolton, you have a question?
Yeah, I, first of all, I don't think finance has any specific things it must do since it appears that all of the financial piece in these next eight board meetings and getting the May forecast ready and the budget and what have you. It would seem to me that all those things are going to be full board discussions. I just don't want us to establish a precedent that we aren't in the future going to be using committees as we, you know, did before. And I, and I think that's, so I would see that the ad hoc people can be part of the new norm a little bit later in the year if necessary and, and move on and we work from the protocol that we have. And, and, and the things that are essential like evaluations or what have you, that can, you know, can either work within the one committee, student achievement on that one issue. And in finance, so we can deal with the treasurer piece. But I, I think, I think we can hold off on, on the redesign of the committee system and make it be part of the new norm later.
Okay, so are, are board members in agreement with that? I see your hand, Ms. Bates?
Yeah, a question I have is whether we want to involve the audit committee. Because they've been very active partners with us and it's been very helpful to have citizens that actively involved and also that understand the finances of the district. So one thought is not to have the usual work of the audit committee, but perhaps even convene that group of individuals the way we're convening now to bring them up to date in, in a closer way. And again, I'm looking at this not just from, you know, a, a group of advocates and, and experts who advise us, but we also have the consideration of a levy coming up. So I think that keeping our advisors close may not be a bad idea and just having an update and, you know, and a levy, not a levy discussion, but bringing them up to date on what's happening with that. And we can do that as, as a finance committee. I mean, Eve and Pam, here's the other one, right? Eve, Pam and myself?
Dan.
Then, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I like the idea of, and the other part of that, and I know that this is a future discussion, is that some of those members are part of our Turk. And we definitely want to keep those people informed of what's going on in our, in our district because, you know, they, they are very helpful hands and advisors.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Real quickly, the audit committee had decided not to meet this most recent meeting, which would have been like this week or whatever. But they are expecting the documents and the whatever that has been submitted by everybody. They're going to be receiving that via the internal auditor and Jen Wagner. And so they have an interest in meeting after we get through this. But I, when I was speaking about things just being on hold, I was speaking only about the standing board committees, not, not audit. Audit needs to proceed to Ms. Bates's view as, I, I agree because we need them and their expertise and they are invaluable. So that would be one exception. But I was just speaking to the standing committees. So that would be one exception, but I was just speaking to the standing committees.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Murawski.
Thank you, President Jones, um, and thanks for putting this on the Board Matters, um, Ms. Bolton. So from my perspective on policy, uh, I imagine there will be some new policies that will come out of our discussions, um, in the next eight meetings and, um, whatever meetings we end up planning before the school year. Our current agenda had four items, um, uh, all of which are important. I'm biased, I think they're all important, uh, but, uh, in the scheme and context of where we are now, none are pressing. To that end, and, um, understanding the role of the policy committee and sort of taking on the work of the board that's passed to us through assignment, et cetera, um, you know, I'm fine, uh, with meeting as we need to, um, or if General Counsel Hoing, uh, who was going to bring 7,000, 8,000 series recommendations to update to whenever our next meeting is, if General Counsel Hoing, uh, I may actually make this an assignment today, does an audit of his own of policies or the superintendent, if you're like, you know, we need some things that could maybe have tweaks now to Mr. Lindy's point, the superintendent, in my, my opinion too, knows, um, what is going to need to be teed up, um, for the summer, for the fall and going forward. And so I'm fine with having policy sort of be the repository for those items because again, I don't have the crystal ball that I talked about earlier, but I imagine, uh, we're going to have some tweaks to current policies and then maybe even some new ones. So I just put that out there, that policy is here to meet, not to speak on behalf of Mr. Messer and Ms. Bowers, um, but I know, uh, we're going to be meeting soon, as soon as achievement anyhow, so I know we, we're up for doing what we need to as needed.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we keep saying, we keep saying, this is a new normal, uh, we don't want to go back to business as usual, so we really have to think through where our priorities are and stick to our guns about that, so that not only, I mean, and I understand we have board priorities, we have things that need to be done, but yet, but we also want to be very considerate of, uh, having lots of committee meetings where we're asking our staff to participate. So anyway, that, this sounds good. I think we got some good clarities around, uh, where we stand with the committees. Mr. Murawski, last question.
No, I just wanted to second that point. I mean, that's, and that, that is where the framing of my comment came, that we're here as policy as needed, um, not just surrounding, yeah, cool.
Trust me, I believe you're going to have a lot more work to do as we move toward this new normal. So, okay, all right. So if we move on, I, I put this on here, but given our, just having our conversation this evening, I would defer that because I think that, and, and what this was about, but in our strategic plan, we have a measure that is exclusive to the board in terms of our measures. So rather than pick it apart tonight, I think we need to think of it in the bigger context as we start to look at our, uh, strategic plan in the sort of transition to a new normal. Um, so I'm actually, um, uh, going to, uh, remove that from the Board Matters agenda for right now, for right now, if that's okay with you guys.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, all right. So the, the, the next one is about our board meeting schedule, and we talked about that a little bit, um, but I, there were two things about the board's schedule. One is, given that we are sort of in transition, um, we have a bunch of meetings packed together and then like in July, we, when we probably need to have more board meetings, we have one. So, uh, I, I would urge, and maybe this is an assignment, because we have a couple of people who volunteer to relook the schedule, to relook the, the board meeting calendar. So I want to make an assignment when we get there to those two board members, who are they? Uh, Ms. Bolton, it was you and somebody else. Mr. Messer? Was it Mr. Messer? Okay, and maybe I'll make, I'll make an assignment about relooking the board calendar, but we also, and this is just the plant in your heads, um, we also need to look at next year. And even though we're going to be in a new normal, I know that, uh, administration, I don't know where administration is with the district calendar and all that or what that would look like. I'm not asking you all to do anything with it, we just need to start thinking about that because I know we like to get that done fairly early. Okay, anything, anything else under Board Matters that we didn't cover? Okay, great. All right, so let's move on to resolutions. All righty, so Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution for board consideration.
With the, uh, school lunch?
Oh.
Yeah, Bates is doing that.
Yeah.
I, mine are out of order. I had, let's, let's do, um, that's fine, let's do the school lunch and that would be, um, Ms. Bates.
Yes, as Chair of Health and Safety, because this definitely has a lot to do with the health of our students, I was asked to, uh, bring this resolution to the board, uh, for possible adoption. And it's a resolution in recognition of School Lunchero Day. Uh, so I, I propose this resolution for adoption as printed.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
I'll, I'll discuss this just a little bit.
Yes, Ms. Bates.
This, this is a real thing. It's the Eighth Annual School Lunchero Day, and it's particularly appropriate now because, you know, our, our employees of our dining services are like essential workers, uh, in, in supporting our students through this epidemic. So, uh, this, I think it's very appropriate, uh, to recognize these individuals, uh, in particular because of the work that they're doing and the contact they're keeping with our students.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution for board consideration.
Thank you very much, President Jones. It's a great, uh, honor, privilege and makes me very, very happy to be able to introduce this, uh, on behalf of the board and then, uh, I'll get it started. A, a resolution celebrating Dr. Marilyn Crumpton. Whereas, Dr. Marilyn Crumpton is a board certified pediatrician who has spent her entire career in public health and she has worked closely with the Cincinnati Public Schools for more than a decade on issues related to student health. And whereas, Dr. Crumpton began her career as a pediatrician in Alabama, including serving two years at Leister Army Hospital in Fort Rucker, Alabama, and more than 10 years with the Alabama Department of Health and-
Whereas, in 2008, Dr. Crumpton began the medical direct, became the medical director. Am I reading the right area?
Yep, yep, you're good.
Okay, uh, it's very difficult to read here. For the Cincinnati Health Department Division of School and Adolescent Health, in a role, Dr. Crumpton was the primary liaison between CPS, the city and the city on all matters involving student and public health and?
Go again?
I don't have it, Ryan. Keep going, Ryan, I don't have it.
Whereas, Dr. Crumpton oversaw a team of school-based registered nurses who provide onsite skilled nursing care to scores of CPS students with significant medical needs and?
Ms. Bowers?
I, Ryan read mine, I don't have it.
No. Read, somebody, would somebody please read, whereas? Go ahead, Mr. Ryan.
Whereas, okay, whereas, Dr. Crumpton has been an inevitable resource for CPS principals and administrators, uh, grading the school district through all manners of issues involving student health, vaccinations, outbreaks of illnesses, disease prevention and health education and?
Whereas, Dr. Crumpton was crucial to the development of school-based health centers. She helped to develop a model of school-based health centers that could be replicated by other healthcare providers.
Whereas, from 2016 to 2018, Dr. Crumpton was appointed as a Cincinnati Health Commissioner and leader of the city's health department. In her role, Dr. Crumpton continued advocating for healthy living environments and social wellbeing as well as working to reduce health inequity caused by poverty and unemployment and?
That's you too.
Whereas, Dr. Crumpton has also served as the medical director for Growing Well, an independent nonprofit organization that improves health by connecting students and their families to accessible school-based health services.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education thanks Dr. Crumpton for her many years of public service benefiting the health of all Cincinnadians and specifically CPS schoolchildren through her service in the Division of School and Adolescent Health. The Board of Education wishes her well in all of her future endeavors on behalf of the, reading on behalf of the, uh, Board of Education. So, Ms., Ms., um, Bolton presented the motion. I need a second.
I second it.
Any discussion? I, I believe Ms., uh, Crumpton, is she still on? Can we see her on the screen?
Yes, I'm still on.
You're still on, there you are, hi. Okay, um, well, board members, you have questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Murawski?
I just want to say hello, Marilyn, um, and it's good to see you. Uh, I couldn't have been more excited when I saw there was a resolution honoring you, uh, on tonight's agenda. And, uh, I just want to share a story about Dr. Crumpton, um, who will be mad at me for calling her Dr. Crumpton. Uh, I, I would like to share a story, yeah, I'm sorry, I'd like to share a story about Marilyn. I was working with her in my, my day job capacity at Cradle Cincinnati and we had a convening of a whole big group of people. And the, I think this story just speaks to who Marilyn Crumpton is. She is instrumental in CPS leading the nation in school-based health centers. And by instrumental, I mean at the very center of that. And that's a very big, significant deal that people talk about all over the country, even if they don't know Marilyn's name. Uh, but at this huge meeting with all these people and I was doing introductions, everyone introduced, uh, Marilyn introduced herself as a volunteer. Um, and I think that just speaks to who Marilyn is. And I see smiles and people that know Marilyn know what I mean by that. So thank you so much for everything. I know you're not going anywhere, there's a lot of volunteering to be done, um, and we're going to need you, so thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Bowers.
Hi, Marilyn, I'm sorry I couldn't read, I didn't see it on my screen. But just, I just want to just add, um, kudos and, and congratulations. Um, your partnership with, uh, with community learning centers has been awesome. You and I have been on that road and, and been in the same circles for a long time, for years, uh, from the inception of, of community learning centers, um, to school-based health centers, uh, partnering with mental health partners in the community. And I want to, um, uh, ditto what, um, what, um, Mike said. Your commitment to students and just families, your compassion is invaluable. Every time you talk about working and, and, and trying to, you, you don't take no point answer for anything. You, you, uh, insight on how we can, uh, move to the next thing or we can make this work, and you're always so open to, to connecting with, with legislation and whomever needs to be, uh, conversed with regarding getting something done. So congratulations, um, I'm sure I want to see you in plenty of the same circles because you're not going to sit down.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, uh, I, I second everything that everyone has said. I think that in the 12 years or so that I've been on the board, I can think of maybe, maybe five people that changed the nature of Cincinnati Public Schools and even changed the way we think of ourselves as Cincinnati Public Schools. The idea that we are serving the whole child, the whole family, and the reality that our children can't succeed unless we are able to provide those kinds of services. And more importantly, she, Marilyn, makes things happen. And in this town, that's pretty hard. She takes initiative and changes the face of any organization. And I really have appreciated the fact that I remember one conversation with a superintendent and Marilyn in a small conference room, it's not our current superintendent. It was when we were expanding school-based health centers and one of the expansions was going to one particular side of our city. And there was great consternation about how it would be politically and socially and culturally received to have a student-based health center, uh, at, uh, one of our high schools. And the superintendent was not predisposed to say yes, for a good reason. And instead Marilyn was able, single-handedly, to convince her that not only was there a need, but by God, a no, not just a need, but if you put a particular, uh, health institution label on the front of it, it might be more politically acceptable and socially acceptable. So she's also a fine Paul and, um, I've loved working with her and we are the leader in the state and I believe in the nation in school-based health centers for Mar- from, because of Marilyn and also her team of people that have made things happen. So God bless you, uh, and, uh, I look forward to seeing you around, but I also know you've got other places to go too. So God love you.
Yes, so, um, Marilyn, I'll, I'll also ditto what everybody else has said. I think that I've known you now, um, oh my God, at, at the very minimum, 10 years or so, having met you around the, in the mental health arena and, um, have greatly appreciated all your contributions again to the care of kids, um, always respected you and, and your, uh, the information that you had to share. And I agree with, I believe Ms. Bolton said, and you get things done and you do it with a great deal of integrity and I have just appreciated that so much. I'll listen to you about anything, I just believe you know what you're talking about. So, uh, congratulations to you and I wish you well. Okay, yes. So, uh, anything will allow you to speak, uh, if you'd like? You want to have a few words?
Sure, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity because, uh, you know, it was, uh, a vision to see what was possible to be done and how we could take money that Cincinnati Health Department could generate and create school-based health centers without creating any burden on the district because the district needed to spend the money on education. And I just love how it has played out to be such a great model. And it's also strengthened the role and the use of the school nurses and the partnership with Cincinnati Public Schools and Cincinnati Health Department in the city and that role as well. So it, it has been a fabulous, and I've said to many people, the, the greatest joy in my career has been the years that I've spent working with Cincinnati Public Schools. So thank you all for that. I really appreciate the opportunity and what we've been able to get done. Dr. Grant Musman has, uh, now officially taken over my role as the Medical Director for School and Adolescent Health and like me, now he is also, um, now in charge as the interim Medical Director for the whole Health Department. So, uh, he will push very hard because he has children and, uh, I think they're, but they're at Kilgore, so he's going to push very hard to continue the same kind of support. And I am really glad that he's done that and is willing to do that piece. So lean heavily on him and the, the school nurses and I really, really appreciate, um, the work that you all have done, what you've been able to accomplish, the vision that you've created and I'm just glad I was able to be a part of it. And I am in North Carolina now, um, so we, um, are enjoying our newest granddaughter, but I'll still stay involved with Growing Well. And, uh, so I'll be on the- Well. And so I'll be on the periphery, being part of the Growing Well meetings, to be sure that all the good work continues.
Thank you so much, and it's a pleasure to have you here. Congratulations on your new grandbaby. Enjoy. And I'm sure we'll see you soon. I'm sure.
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, Rob.
All right. Bye.
Bye.
Okay. Did we vote?
We have to vote.
I'm not finished. I'm not finished. Yes. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution for more consideration.
Okay, let's see. I need to move it. Oh, there it is. Good. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. And we do that as it pertains to revised code, Section 5705.34. So we are required by law to do this. Rather than read the two-page resolution, I introduce it and hope for approval. And perhaps the treasurer in discussion will be able to share a little bit more information with us.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
The report that I have this evening is the printed superintendent's recommendations.
Okay. Do Board members have questions or comments? Mr. Lindy?
Yeah, Superintendent, I want to acknowledge that it's only been two business days since our last meeting. And so if you hadn't had a chance to do all of these things perfectly, I understand. I wanted to raise something that came up at the meeting on Saturday that I would like to follow up on at some point, which is breaking down those numbers you shared by race and by socioeconomic status, particularly around contact rates, engagement in online learning, and device distribution. Is that, I'm making the assumption that that's in the works. It's just taking a second. I checked that assumption. Is that accurate?
Yes. And so I believe that on the board memo that I sent to you on Monday, the first whole section listed the assignments that were given on Saturday. So does that sound familiar to you all?
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so the administration, we're working on that, and we'll be preparing a memo to give you the results back from that. But we did capture everything, put it in a board memo to you on Monday, and we'll be working on getting that information back, all of it, by a board member.
That sounds great. Thanks.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I need a, Mr. Messer?
Oh, I was just going to motion to approve this superintendent's.
All right. Is there a second?
Again.
Ms. Bowers, any discussion?
Sorry. Yeah, I have, yes, I did have a discussion question regarding the CPS TV not working. Have you heard, has anybody heard that? That it's not working? I've had several comments. I'm sorry. It was, it was really just inquiry. We talked about it on Saturday, and I just wanted to see if anybody had heard that.
Okay. So the superintendent, did you want to comment?
Yes, I see Deputy Superintendent Amat available to be able to respond, as well as I'm not sure if Tiana, you had any response for Mr. Lindy's first question. I saw you pop up.
Yes, I do. Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. CPS TV for Cincinnati Bell, the channel was actually 804 and not 803. And for Spectrum, it was for the city limits of Cincinnati on Channel 15. So there were certain areas, like Cheviot and Silverton, who did not have access. So we have posted that map and shared that map with our Communications Department, and have updated all of our material and literature that went out, and our website to give the updated information.
And just a part B, Deputy Superintendent, and then I'll move on. For the programming, is there a guide on the website for programming as to what age level is on the TV and for what group of kids?
Yes, we will have that posted typically in the morning. It's preschool age towards the midday, elementary and high school, late afternoon. But we are working on publishing a schedule.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and you know, we've had, I've had several reach out to me in various places about whether if, whether it's available on internet if they don't have cable.
The programming itself, no. But what we're posting on our CPS YouTube channel are some of the videos that are posted on CPS TV. Some of the programming and guest speakers and the field trips are posted on our CPS YouTube channel.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Well, I just, yeah, I didn't know, is there something we could get that have those instructions that we could share broadly? I mean, I've seen, I'd probably say at least six or seven comments, and then I've received a few, just to say, here are some of the virtual options, because none of them are going to be the end-all, be-all. But if we could just say, we have these things that are available on CPS TV, these are things that are available on the internet, here are the things happening with our individual teachers. I think it tells kind of this comprehensive story of learning in a virtual world. Just knowing that a one-size just isn't going to fit everyone, but the more we can make it easy for somebody to just point and click, maybe from a flyer we could send out that had links, or anything else you could recommend that might even have. And to help us update, keep you in close contact, click here to update your personal information with CPS.
I would highly recommend our CPS remote learning site. And that is a one-stop-shop from YouTube channels, if you have a device, if you do not have access, from learning plans to YouTube videos. We have to do a better job of getting that information out of where you can kind of one-stop shop and have all of that information. So I'll work with the Communications Department to develop a plan so we can get it out to our families and communities a lot better.
Thank you. And then I think if all of us share that, it'll get out to such a variety of networks. So thank you for that.
Right. Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
So Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer? Oh, I'm sorry, Superintendent?
Yes, I just wanted to see if we could close the loop on what Mr. Lindy asked about in terms of the data. So Deputy Superintendent, I wasn't sure if you were able to respond now.
Yes. Board Member Lindy, we are putting together, actually, we had a meeting today. We are putting together a new format to go directly into Power School, where the data is already captured there. What we did originally was capture the data through a Google form. So it did not have the demographics of students easily to pull across the district. So we are changing the format to Power School. And so hopefully, we'll be ready to go on Monday, and then we will have weekly reports with the demographic data.
I just say thank you. I think that's great. It's cool to see that, like a process improvement that's going to get, let us know how we're doing from an equity standpoint. And I want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to approve the report of the treasurer. Go move. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Whoa. Are there any inquiries or updates? We just did a few. Mr. Morosky?
I just have a brief, really cool update for everyone's edification. One of our favorite community partners, Keisha at Originalities, and I had a conversation before this board meeting, and she has a real desire to get T-shirts, class of 2020, with all our high schools' names on them, in the school colors to students. And her, the massive logistical issue, of course, is knowing what size shirts the kids wear, and how they would even pick them up. So I wanted to give that update, because I think it's a really nice thing. Our community wants to do something nice for our students. And then I guess just ask if there would be, if there's, and so then my inquiry is, if this is something that folks would, at the center, also be interested in, to whom she should speak to try to figure out those logistical things. Because she's willing to donate 1,900 shirts in the school colors for the students. So wondering if that's, like, someone could help, or how what that means, what that looks like.
Superintendent?
Yes. Actually, you know, I should have used this as an opportunity to give you an update, but I wanted to have everything really concretely laid out first. So we are working on and have been in contact with our building principals on about graduation parades at schools. And so we're working on getting that together, and then we'll be able to produce that schedule for any board member who may be interested in attending. The reason that I'm bringing this up is that we have T-shirts for all of our seniors that we will give out during that time, along with their diplomas. But we are more than, we're open to additional T-shirts. And so we have the shirts by size for our young people. And so I can work with Shauna Murphy, who's the Assistant Superintendent, who's on the lead for that. So if you want to make the connection, then we can make sure we get those. So for this, and we'll provide more up-to-date information for you, for this graduation parade, we're looking at giving out diplomas, yard signs, letters from staff members for all of the kids, as well as T-shirts. And so, like I said, we're working on getting all this planned and worked out. And our principal seems extremely.
That's really cool. That's really cool.
Yeah. So Superintendent, just to clarify, I think this is dynamic. I'm excited about that. And just a question, so the graduation parades, are all of them happening around the same time? Are they staggered times? And so, okay.
They would be on different days. So we're working out the music, because we want to have music playing. We're going to have security there. So we're looking to reallocate some of the funding that we ordinarily spend at UC to reserve that space to be able to do a really nice send-off for our young people. So we'll be providing a schedule to you really soon.
That's great. I would suggest that in order, I would suggest that there be board representation at all of them. So maybe we could go by our assignment list. Oh, yeah, that would be good. Yeah.
Great idea.
Whatever's true. So I'll have Phyllis or Pat send that out, so that once we get the schedule, board members can plan to attend the ones they were assigned to. That would be great.
Masks included.
Yes. Go ahead.
To Mr. Messer's point, we're getting the numbers of people who will be there, so that we can provide masks for them. Just a little FYI, our IT team printed 133D masks, so you may be able to use one of those really cool masks. Yeah.
Oh, cool.
That sounds great to me. I will be practicing social distancing, but I want to be part of it, so.
But we'll get you the POC mobile. The POC mobile would be good.
Yes. Yeah. Ms. Bowers?
And I'm asking this because I'm a, I have a graduating child, of course. But Superintendent Mitchell, is this before the July, August date, or would this be?
Yes, this would be this, later in the month of May.
Okay, around, similar to when graduation would be, anyway.
Yeah, we want to do a nice send-off for our graduating seniors. So, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
We'll send out the information soon.
Okay. Any other inquiry or update? Okay, moving on to assignments. Go. Mr. Morosky?
Yeah, just to sort of close the loop on what I was talking about before. So an assignment to General Counsel Hoying, and/or the superintendent, and/or anybody who would be close to this issue. If, the answer could be none. But if there are any policies that need to be updated now, the Policy Committee can figure out a time to meet in the next week. Now, again, not to speak for Mr. Messer and Ms. Bowers. If there's not, there's not. But just know that we're here to help that, so your hands aren't tied.
Thank you. Any other assignments? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I mean, just to formalize, I think in Vice Superintendent, or Assistant Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Amat, oh my gosh, it was not coming out, where she talked about making sure that our communications team just kind of goes wide and far for all these virtual options, and then making sure that all of our teachers and peer professionals are also copied on that. Everybody's kind of looking at the same thing. You know, parents get one thing, and then, you know, we had our Zoom meet today. If I ask, I think everybody should just be on the same page. So I think that would really be a nice addition to everything else that's going so well right now. But thank you.
Thank you. I have, Ms. Bolton, go ahead.
Mine is just in response to Mr. Morosky's point regarding policy. Depending upon how the superintendent wants to proceed, it's possible that not like today or tomorrow, but sometime during the early summer, or even sometime in May, it may be needed to have a policy regarding the new OTES 2.0. So just to keep making sure we get that in there, so that there's an opportunity if we decide to go ahead for training and preparation for that. Thank you.
Okay. And then mine is, I'd like to ask, I'd like to assign the responsibility of balancing our calendar, the board's calendar for this year, and thinking about next year's calendar. And I want to assign that to the two people who have worked on it before, Ms. Bolton and Mr. Messer? Was it Mr. Messer?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Great. That's, any other assignments? Okay, so I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider employment of a public. to consider employment of a public employee, preparations for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions, and security matters.
Go move.
Second.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. I want to thank our public folks, our audience, for attending and participating. And again, we hope to be able to work out some of the glitches that we had. So we appreciate very much, and we'll be going live to the, I'm sorry, we will be going into executive session in five minutes.